Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease, available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
It's January 14th, 2025.
Recording in progress.
I'm convening this meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Hingham. Time is six o'clock. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone recording?
Joe, one second. Connor, can you turn the camera and the zoom on? Is it all set?
Uh, is it not on?
Maybe I'm just thinking of the zoom. Should I just ignore that one? Okay. Thank you.
So I will note for the record that participating in the meeting this evening is Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So this evening, we do not have minutes to consider, so we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is to consider the agreement with Colonial Ford, Inc., doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for four 2025 Ford Police Utility Vehicles and one 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe to the Hingham Police Department. David Jones, Chief. David, good to see you.
Thank you.
So please let us know what and why.
So these are replacement vehicles as part of the capital replacement plan for our fleet. The Chevy Tahoe is going to be used as the patrol supervisor's vehicle on the road. The other four are gas police interceptor vehicles replacing older frontline vehicles for us. So the older vehicles that they're replacing will be traded in, and there's a credit on the attached quote from Colonial showing the total value of the trades.
And you and I discussed this before. I just want to make it clear. So four of the vehicles are model year 2025. One, the Chevy Tahoe, is model year 2024, even though we're buying it new in 2025.
Correct.
And just explain why we're getting a 2024 instead of a 2025.
It's availability of the vehicles. Chevy's running behind with availability. So that's first and foremost. It is a new vehicle. Comes with a new vehicle warranty, and there is not any significant changes between the two model years that would affect our decision to move ahead with the 2024 model.
And I'm assuming that the 2024 model is less expensive than the 2025?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of your budget for making these acquisitions, are these within your budget?
They're within the allocated capital funds. Yes.
No other questions. Liz?
All right, just following on to that. So that's the capital fund for FY '25?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. No other questions. Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey?
And so if we authorize it tonight, when will they be available for use?
So they're on the ground now at Colonial, so it would just be scheduling with the outfitter to get the equipment transferred over from the trades. So I'd assume within a month and a half.
Great. Thank you.
Tom, anything you want to add?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Colonial Ford, Incorporated, doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for four 2025 Ford Police Utility Vehicles and one 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe for the Hingham Police Department in an amount not to exceed $260,614.52.
Ashley, is it Municipal Group or Motor Group?
I believe it's Municipal Group.
It's Municipal.
It is? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Bill?
So do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye, and a aye as well. We're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item on our agenda is to consider the agreement with CN Wood Enviro LLC for a trailer-mounted sewer and drain line cleaning machine for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Russell Tierney, please explain.
Why I'm here?
Why we need this?
So the DPW had a, what they call a rodder trailer. That was a 2001, about two years ago. It broke and no repair parts were available for it. So they had put out a contract with a couple of different contracts, and through CN Wood found what we call a Vector Jetter Trailer, which is a little different than the rodder. It uses water. It's a much better piece of equipment. It has a full one-year warranty, and the funding is actually encumbered for FY '24. It was supposed to be present FY '24, but they didn't have any. So we waited until they told us that they did have one in stock. The funding is covered for FY '24, and it is through the, I wrote that down. Where did I put it? Help me out, will ya? Where's the, it was through the, no, it was through the, I just want to let you guys know what contract it was through.
Oh, Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing.
Yeah, Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing. So that's how we went up the price for it. The new, the other one is being traded in. They're going to give us $750 for it. So the sale price was $125,945, and the net due is $125,195. And this is again encumbered from Capital FY '24 and was in the FY '24 Capital approval. Question?
I just have a clarifying question. So this is out of the DPW budget?
Yeah, so, yeah, Randy's not here, so I said I would jump in and take care of this for those guys.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
All hands on deck.
So.
I left my hat at home of a DPW.
It's the vest we're looking at.
This will, this also, what it does is it allows us to have department staff clear minor blockages instead of bringing in some of the larger contractors that we have that charge about $2,000 a day for a Vector truck. So they use this a lot, I guess, you know, two or three years ago when it was working well. And now that it's a new water-type model, not the rod-type model, it's a much better piece of equipment, so.
So in the item we just considered with the police vehicles, we actually knew the model year.
Yep.
Is there a year associated with this?
There isn't any, but it's brand new.
I didn't see it.
It's brand new. I don't, I don't think they do model years on trailer-Back-to-trucks, but it's brand new.
No other questions? Bill?
Thank you. I know you've been shitting for Randy, so if you don't know the answer, it's okay. So is it like, is it a forced water?
Yeah, it pumps, yeah, it has two tanks on the side of it. It pumps at about 40 PSI at, no, 2,000 PSI, 225-gallon tanks. So 2,000 PSI will go through this nozzle. I used one of these in the city of Chelsea, and it works very well. So it's going to be a good piece of equipment for them to clear, like I said, instead of calling in the bigger contractors that we use.
What have they been using to clear blockages?
The contracts that we have.
Oh, the contracts, yeah.
Between the SOAR and the DPW, we have the contracts with National Water Main and a few other large contractors. So it's really expensive to have them come in and clear a very small block, so this'll be, this'll be a lot, very helpful.
Great. Thank you. Impressive you knew what the PSI was.
So those contracts, we are charged per job, so it's not as if we continue paying those contracts even if we're not using their service?
No, they're by job, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah. They're on a call-in list that we call in.
Yep. Great. Any member of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with CN Wood Enviro LLC for a trailer-mounted sewer and drain line cleaning machine for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $125,195.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
An aye, and a aye as well. Russ, thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to fiscal year 2026 departmental budget requests, and we will begin with the Recreation Department. And if you two can introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Sure. Mark Thorell, Director of Hingham Recreation.
And Vicki Donlon, Chair of the Rec Commission.
Great. Okay, so please take us through your request.
Sure. Thank you for inviting us here tonight to go over the Rec Department's 2026 budget. Our operating budget consists of the Director's salary and the town turf maintenance budget. The other four full-time staff members, all department expenses and payroll for our 125 seasonal staff are fully funded by the Rec Department's revolving fund, which this past fiscal year has surpassed $2.3 million in revenue. Taking a look at scope of services of programs, children's programs, our largest customer base tends to be Hingham's children. We want to appeal to parents who are looking for affordable options without sacrificing quality. Our children's curriculum has surpassed 3/4 of a million dollars in revenue per year, and our average program class costs $16 to $18 per session. To note, a few of our larger programs, dance typically fills 560 children, over 300 toddlers sign up for our soccer program, 260 children have enrolled in tennis over the last calendar year, field hockey has grown to over 350 girls, and track and field has grown to 100 children. Adult programs, we offer 18 drop-in rec classes per week. These classes consist of spinning, yoga, pickleball, cardio, hip-hop, and dance fitness. All of our drop-in classes cost between $5 to $15 per session. Besides all of our drop-in offerings, we offer preregistration, adult tennis, dance, and golf. Pickleball has exploded in popularity over the last 10 years, and we have enrolled over 100 adults into lessons, and the public courts between Cronin and Plymouth River are constantly filled. This has resulted in the rec spearheading the efforts to create dedicated pickleball courts in Hingham. Taking a look at our summer camp, our most popular service to the community is our in-house summer camps, which cater to children from ages 3 to 13. Our summer programs are offered throughout the entire 10-week summer. The preschool program enrolled over 750 toddlers. The Fun Time Program, which is grades 1 through 3, enrolled 1,320 children. Adventure Club for kids going into 4th and 5th grade enrolled 587 children. Parkland, 175 children, and our Teen Extreme Program has grown to 1,105 teenagers. Our summer camps offer small counselor-to-child ratios, field trip, theme days, bowling, swimming. We provide all these amenities at a cost that breaks down to $9 to $15 per hour. Even at these affordable hourly rates, we gross approximately $1.3 million in camp revenue. We've been successful at finding that right blend of quality and affordability. Taking a look at our July 4th road race, the road race is kind of considered our big fundraiser of the year. It provides the Rec Commission the ability to have a capital account and reinvest into fields, programs, and equipment. We are also able to establish a summer program scholarship fund, which provides the opportunity for upwards of 60 Hingham children who can come to camp who may not otherwise be able to do so. Taking a look at athletic fields, managing the town's athletic field turf maintenance consists of scheduling and oversight of the town's 68 acres of athletic fields. Our athletic field staff do an incredible job of grooming the town's 17 infills. They have a passion for baseball and softball, and it really comes out with the work that they do. We manage and schedule all athletic field applications, which consists of irrigation, repairs, utilities, slice seating, top dressing, air rating, and field renovations. Hingham Rec permits and schedules all town fields and courts. This consists of 37 fields at 16 locations, 28 tennis courts at 6 locations, and 10 basketball courts at 7 locations. Every permit from every sports group comes through our office. We upload it onto our rec software, and it's in a format where members from the public can kind of take a look at the software and see what field are being used at what time. It's been a pleasure working with the high school athletic director, Jim Quatermoni, along with Matt Meehan, who's the head of the school maintenance personnel, and making sure that all the schools' needs have been met with their athletic fields. Organizational chart. I'm extremely grateful for being able to work with an incredibly talented and hard-working administrative team that served the Hingham community with passion and dedication. The rec staff loves the challenge of meeting the needs of community. Recreation trends are constantly changing, and it takes a dynamic team who are willing to put the needs of the department as a high priority. It's a privilege to work hand-in-hand with my teammates, as I'm often blown away with their continued dedication to our hundreds of program offerings. We hire about 125 staff members who are the backbone to our summer camps. The counselors have the toughest, most demanding job in the department. We have high expectations, and they always amaze me with their ability to step up every summer and supervise Hingham's children in a safe and fun manner. These remarkable 15- to 22-year-olds possess a maturity level beyond their years. Our counselors' enthusiasm and ability to engage with Hingham's children is inspiring, and this has been our secret sauce to why our camps have been so successful over the last 10-plus years. Benchmarks and metrics. We pride ourselves on running an efficient department that does not rely on the town to pay for recreational programs, expenses, and salaries. Other than the department head, Hingham Rec is fully self-sufficient. Our revolving fund and road race gift fund operations could pay to approximately $2.4 million. This enables us to pay for four full-time staff members, the 125 seasonal staff members, and all departmental expenses. We've also been fortunate enough to reinvest some of the program money back into playgrounds, fields, and facility improvements. Next slide for benchmarks and metrics. The average number of weeks mass rec departments offer summer camps is typically between 6 to 8 weeks, and as you can see from the bar graph, only Hingham Rec and Weymouth Rec offer the full 10 weeks of summer. We take a lot of pride in making sure we can, we continue to accommodate the Hingham families to being able to offer camps all summer long, and it's always one of our highest priorities. Total enrollment for summer camps, average enrollment with mass rec departments, I would say, is typically between 1,800 and 2,000 children for the summer. And as you can see from the graph there, we were just shy of 4,300 spots filled for this past summer. Taking a look at key initiatives, this spring, we're excited for the grand opening of the Hingham Community Playground. It's been a project we've been working on for the past three years, and just by middle of next week, the contractor should have finished installing all the equipment. I think they will be taking a recess over winter and then coming back in the springtime and finishing up with the surfacing and the pathways around the playground. So we're really excited for that grand opening in the spring. Another key initiative for the Rec Commission is to improve accessibility at town fields. This was noted several times in the athletic field and court study for the town to work on, and the town and the rec was recently awarded a $250,000 grant, which will go to be constructing a pathway system around Haley and Cronin Field right behind Town Hall. The expenditure summary. Oh, we're just skipping through those. The last slide there, it just breaks down the rec's operating budget, and with it just being the Director's salary, and then the rest of the items having to do with the turf maintenance budget, so the part-time wage is 100% for the athletic field staff members as they work in the spring, fall, spring, summer, fall. And then the expense line there is 100% for the town turf maintenance budget, which covers all the school fields as well. So the total request between those items is $411,618. In summary, it's a privilege to be part of a team that exhibits a passion for the Hingham community in recreational programming. Our foundation and culture is built off of respect for one another, hard work, and a team-first attitude. We enjoy positively impacting the lives of thousands of residents on an annual basis, and we will continue to support the Hingham community in any way that we can.
Thank you, Mark. Vicki, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, it's a pleasure to work with the Recreation Commission as well as the team. You've never seen such a team work so well together, and it's clearly all due to its leadership. I mean, Mark is quite amazing in what he is able to do, and he knows how to delegate, and he knows how to train people so that they're able to do their job and be part of a team. And to me, there's nothing, no greater skill than that.
I'll tell you, from what I've heard among residents, it's just remarkable. It's all praise, and it's a lot of thanks for the hard work and what you've produced. So thank you both.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I do have a couple of questions. Several times, Mark, in the presentation, you referred to Hingham's children. Are these programs limited to Hingham residents?
The summer camps are, just because of the popularity, but all our other programs that are offering throughout the school year, we do not block out out-of-town residents. It's something to consider if we were filling up programs and we weren't able to accommodate Hingham residents, we would make the necessary changes there, and that's sometimes what happens with our summer camps. So that's why we have to be a little bit stricter with the camps, but all our other programs, we have the flexibility to, if there are some out-of-town residents that want to join, they're welcome to.
And in connection with the summer camps, do we do background checks on counselors?
We do. Yep. We work hand-in-hand with Lisa Campbell, and that whole 125 seasonal staff members go through all the paperwork, including the quarry checks.
And not limited to the summer camps, to what extent do we have insurance for the activities that are conducted through rec?
Insurance.
Is it, I guess, Tom, is this part of the town's comprehensive insurance, or is it something specific for rec?
It is all part of the comprehensive insurance of the town.
I just want to add, Joe, to your question about quarry checks, the wonderful part is that so many of the counselors are Hingham kids that have gone through the camps. So not only do we know them well, that doesn't mean they don't get their quarry check, but they're part of why it's so successful.
It's part of the, they're part of the community, yeah.
And these kids go on to have wonderful opportunities and jobs. I hate to see some of them go. I say to Mark, what can we do to keep this kid? I know he's got to go to college. Maybe we could talk him out of it. There's some real, some really terrific kids.
I may have missed it, but are you also responsible for supervising lifeguards at the beach, and ultimately, when we have a new swimming pool, for the swimming pool?
We are responsible for the lifeguards at the beach. I did not mention that in the presentation, but yes, that's one of the things that we've taken on in the last five years. We schedule, manage, hire the lifeguards that are down at the bathing beach, yes.
But the budget comes from the trustees of the bathing beach budget for that?
Okay. And you mentioned the $250,000 grant that you received. Who was the grantor of that? Where did the money come from?
The state.
The state agencies, the Massachusetts Office on Disability.
Great. And one final comment on the road race. I completed the road race for the first time this year, and it was quite, the first time I did it. It was really quite enjoyable, so thanks for, thanks for putting that on. People come from, as you know, not, not limited.
Over the world.
They're all over. It's going to rival the Boston Marathon. Liz?
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mark. Thank you to your team and Vicki and the Rec Commission. You do a phenomenal job for our community. I can't thank you enough, and certainly camp is on everyone's mind right now. It's time to sign up for summer camp, so that's a tremendous service for, for our Hingham families. And to your point, Vicki, it's a wonderful job opportunity for our older students, too. So it's really a special opportunity. The field maintenance, I see there's a 3% increase for inflation. Is that based on actual quotes, or is that an estimate just based on inflation?
Just an estimate based off of inflation.
Okay. And are there any large capital projects that you're looking at for this year?
Not other than the potential for a possible article for the dedicated pickleball courts. I believe that's it.
Okay. We're talking out of our budget, again, until the playground is done and open to the public. You never know. So that, and obviously pathways. We have been, the projects that we have completed, for example, the basketball court and hockey, all we have created the pathways along with that, just to make it so that it can connect with the grant money that's coming.
Yeah, which is wonderful. Thank you for doing that, and that's a great grant opportunity, and certainly that's one of our goals, to make it more accessible. The fundraising that you mentioned, how does that compare with other years?
We were right on par this year as other years. Our numbers did get back up to pre-pandemic levels. We were a little bit lower for a couple of years, but the enrollment for the race or the race registration was back up at 2,000, so.
Because I enrolled.
That's true. That's true. Joe, yeah.
I have to say, the other dynamic is the fact that everybody does everything last minute now, so we plan for everybody to come, but the day before, you would be surprised, I say to Mark, are you kidding? This many people are going to register that day? Sure enough, people walk in with six members of their family. We decided when we woke up this morning, really, you woke up at 5:30 and decided to go run four and a half? Okay, you got to pay more. So the advantage of doing that is we get to put a little extra money in our pocket, but we plan for those, which is always an important part.
Excellent. Yes, well, and I'm glad we still have the scholarships for the summer camp, so thank you. No other questions? Great job.
Adding a potential supplement, you asked about other projects. I will tell you that Vicki and I have been working on possibly doing a bike walk pass connecting parts of the town through Oompa Tuck to the high school. So hopefully that will be in the offering, but it's not in any current budget item right now.
Got it.
Bill?
Yeah, so echo what Joe and Liz said about your great leadership, Mark. Obviously, you and I used to work together at the rec years ago, and it's great to see someone move up through the ranks like you did to now run the department and run it at such a high level. Thank you for that. And Vicki, you have been a wonderful advocate for the rec as well, so thank you for that. In terms of your capital dollars, do you anticipate using any capital money for the pickleball courts?
Not for the pickleball courts. We do have a request in there for the accessible pathway project. The money that we received, I believe it would cover the construction of asphalt walkways. We are taking a look at to see, does it make more sense fiscally and long-term for the town to invest a little bit more money and put in cement walkways? for the town to invest a little bit more money and put in cement walkways? That's right, concrete walkways. It has a life expectancy of usually three or four times that of asphalt. So we were considering that option, and I think that kind of boils down to our one capital request is supplement money for the accessible way.
Concrete, concrete, for any of you who have asphalt walkways at your home and how quickly they crack. I mean, I'm pushing this concrete because the whole point is to make it accessible. And if it's accessible and then three years from now it's cracked, it's no longer accessible, in my opinion. So this is definitely something that's on our radar to make sure that with this opportunity, we get to move forward with a concrete pathway. So I'm a little ahead of where Mark might be at this moment, but I figure I'll share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from any member of the public? Tom, anything you wanted to add?
Nope, I'm great. Mark does an awesome job. I say it every year. We're lucky to have him, and Vicki as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to fire. I was always told not to yell "fire," but in this case.
Well, especially with all the police.
So if you two could introduce yourselves, please.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Steve Murphy. I'm the fire chief.
Lula Chance, deputy fire chief.
Great.
And just to point out, we also have, in virtual land, deputy chief Dave Lovettson is joining us as well.
Good evening. So please, present us with the budget request.
Okay. So the first slide, our mission and services. You've probably heard us mention this beforehand. Our mission really doesn't change year to year. What we deliver and everything else really kind of stays the same. Our goal is to deliver top-notch care and support to any of the residents. Some of the things that we do to accomplish that is our fire prevention, our public education, risk reduction type of programs. But for the most part, we're there as a reactionary type of department. So whenever someone calls for a medical call or, as the last slide kind of says, when they don't know who else to call, they call the fire department. And I think that will probably always stay for the fire department. Occasionally, we find additional responses that we need to, you know, kind of add to our repertoire. But for the most part, that's what the fire department does. So I can go on to the next slide. So organizationally, we haven't really had any changes. So I think it was FY '24, we were budgeted for four additional personnel. So right now, we have 61 full-time employees. You can see that we have four people that are working days that are, you know, considered staff positions, myself, the two deputy chiefs, and our fire prevention officer. And then we also have a office administrator, office manager. And then the rest of the group, where it shows below that, the captains and the lieutenants and the firefighters, they are the backbone of the department that is, that are responding 24/7 to any type of calls or anything else. So we're broken down into four different groups. There's always one of those groups working out of the three fire stations that we have. All right, go on to the next slide, and Deputy Chance can talk a little bit about our call volume.
All right, excellent. Oh, so some of these numbers were updated? I didn't know that. Excellent. So another busy year, a second busier year so far. We fell three calls short of last year, just three more. Majority of that, 70% of our emergencies are medical, especially with an older population and, you know, the facilities we have around town with Linden Ponds. So 5,379 calls, 70% of that was, was medicals. 3,700 responses for EMS. We did transport 2,800 people to local hospitals. What else on the bottom of the screen? Total EMS transports?
Total calls of EMS and ambulance. And this is the.
Yeah, just a breakdown of ambulance transports. We stay fairly consistent. In calendar year 2024, we did 1,560 advanced life support calls and just about 1,200 BLS calls. The higher number, those are people that need more advanced care. We have run paramedics on our ambulances. They can do EKGs, cardiac defibrillation, intravenous therapy, advanced airways, a lot more advanced skills. And that was the majority of our transports to the hospital.
So just one thing on this, which is kind of interesting, that, you know, you can see there's really no trend, you know, in our services. Years ago, there used to be some busy months, you know, specifically like January, February, March. Were busy months because of flu season and everything else. But I was looking at this chart earlier, and it really doesn't seem to have any rhyme or reason. By the end of the year, we usually end up around the same ballpark number. But when you look year to year, then for some reason, this year, we're much busier in January, yet not as busy in December. You know, so it's just, it's hit or miss sometimes.
Hull's probably busier in July, I notice.
Yeah, I can say certain communities are more seasonal. We don't really experience that much of a swing. We do on some of the other, you know, non-ambulance calls and some of the fire calls. Anytime, and same thing with the police department, when we have certain storms, especially if it's a very busy, like windstorm, then we could get 40 to 60 calls in a, you know, 24-hour period. And that's above average for us, so sometimes that will skew it a little bit. We were kind of fortunate this past year. We haven't had a lot of that stuff. So didn't really have that, you know, offset numbers. If you go on to the key initiatives. So a couple of things. So picture of the Public Safety Building. I understand you have all had tours at various points and everything else. We're very happy with the progress of the project. It's been a long time coming and very happy to see it and can't wait until, you know, sometime in the summer where we're actually starting to move the crews in and, you know, starting to utilize the building. Some of our other initiatives, we keep on talking about it, we have a young department, you know. So firefighter development and training is key for us. And it's also something that even if we didn't have a young department, the number of fires across the country of what people used to do back in the 60s and 70s doesn't exist anymore. So we need to find additional ways to make sure that our staff are still trained so when they do have a significant incident, then they can still handle it. So. Some other initiatives, recruitment. So as I mentioned, we were fortunate that the town approved four additional firefighters for us back in FY '24. We are still working to fill those positions. It kind of, you know, we gain one and then lose one is typically what happens. So we just had a retirement at the, for a disability retirement at the end of January, I'm sorry, the end of December. And we are in the process of hiring someone, you know, that they've accepted the position. We're just starting to go through the pre-employment. We recently had someone that reached out to us from another community that's expressed interest that's coming here. So we constantly call for a recruitment list, but, you know, and I'm sure Chief Jones can say this, recruitment is difficult, you know, and it's across the country. I talk to peers from all over the place, and they say the same thing. They have been for years. So we're trying a few different things. I'm sure you guys may have heard from the end of last year that they did pass a civil service reform. So we're curious to see how that's going to impact us and what we need to do to be able to take advantage of that. Because that would, if the town adopts it, would allow us to hire up to 50% of the candidates from outside of civil service. So that may provide a little bit. But we have talked about doing other things. For example, the individual that I just mentioned that's accepted a position is as a EMT that's in town. Usually, we hire paramedics. In this case, he's a Hingham resident that's an EMT that's also in paramedic school. So it kind of works to our advantage for all this stuff. So we're working with him on completing paramedic school and then starting with us. We don't, because he's already in the middle of it now, we don't want to pull him out and not have him complete it. Some other projects that we're looking at is Station 3 renovations at South Hingham. So, you know, we got this beautiful picture of the Public Safety Building. Well, 10 years ago, the town created a fire station building committee to look at replacing or renovating both Station 2 and Station 3. They thought, to be honest with you, that Station 2 was going to be an easier project, so they shelved Station 3. And now it's 10 years later, and the building has not had any, you know, changes. We will be putting a new roof on it as part of the money that was funded from, I believe it was FY '24, I think, or FY '23. I think it was FY '23, when the 2.1 million for the fire engine, the work over at Station 1. We are working with the contractor to try to get quotes and everything else. So we'll probably see that work sometime in the spring. But the rest of the, the building still needs renovations or replacements. So I'd like to just bring that up whenever we have an opportunity or anything else to mention that we still need to address that. Station 1, if you've driven by it recently, you've seen that most of the scaffolding is down. So they did replace the roof. They're still working on some portions of it. But it's nearing completion on that. And then we have some other work that needs to be done inside to kind of fix some of the things up. But we still need to address the heating system. Because Art can tell you, working with Patricia for sustainability, unfortunately, when they renovated that building, even when they had an opportunity to put insulation in the walls, they did not, you know. So now we're trying to get sustainability funds, and we need to make, to deal with the HVAC system. But we also have to insulate the building first before the state will consider awarding any funds or anything else. So Patricia's been very good working with us, trying to figure out what some long-term solutions are and stuff. So, but that's a, that's another big project that we have. And the final thing that we have for key initiatives is vehicle replacement and maintenance. And I just added this on there, right now, our vehicles are doing well. It's just the issue, yeah, knock on wood, the issue that we have in the fire service is the lead time. So we are still waiting. We believe, we have, we've seen pictures of the fire engine that's on order, that they actually sent us a website, and we can see the, you know, as it's being built. And I think we're probably still online to take delivery sometime in March. But that was something that was also approved three years ago now. And we have the funding from last town meeting to order another fire engine, but we're most likely going to order the same truck. And since we're doing that, we want to actually get the truck in first to make sure that there's no changes that we want to make to it or anything else. So even once we order that, it's still going to be probably two to three years out, you know. So on a national level, I know some of the fire chiefs that I'm involved in are trying to work with legislatures and with some of the apparatus manufacturers. Because the cost skyrocketing and how long it's taking to build these is not sustainable, and they know that. And so we're trying to work with them, and it may come to the point where they have standardized type of trucks, you know. But right now, we're being told, even if they standardize it, it might not necessarily be cheaper, and it might not be any quicker. But like I said, I know a lot of the fire trucks are manufactured in Wisconsin and in Florida. So both chiefs associations and the Government Finance Accountability Office are all trying to work together with legislators to say, hey, we need to address this because we've got a big problem across this country.
Yeah, pre-COVID, a fire engine took about six months, maybe eight months to get delivered, and it was about $500,000. It is now three years to get delivered and over a million.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. It's the same, and we're seeing the same thing on the ambulance side as well. You know how much the cost has skyrocketed, and those are taking about two years to deliver. Pre-COVID, it was anywhere from four to maybe six months to purchase an ambulance. Now it's two-plus years, you know. So it just, it just doesn't work, so. And if you want to go on, I don't know where you're skipping to on the budget side, okay. Okay. So for budget, and I think Michelle added this on there. I did notice, I was looking at these earlier today, there are a couple of notes that appear that they may have carried over from last year. The first one is not. I think Michelle added this one on. So on our wages, I'm sure you guys are probably aware that we are in contract negotiations. So we actually have a meeting again on Thursday. We're hoping, seems like we're making pretty good progress, but I don't want to jinx anything. But we're hoping that we can possibly come before you guys with the contract soon. If we do, then depending upon where we are, hopefully, we can update the budget numbers. But right now, all of our budget numbers are based on FY '24 numbers, you know. So now we're actually getting two cycles out with a couple of slight changes to it. So these are, you know, some of the slight increases would be due to step raises within our department or in certain cases with employees retiring, and it shifts things around a little bit. But, you know, for the most part, the, the numbers on the payroll side is pretty flat, and that's because of the new contract. On the expenses side, I tried to keep most of them pretty flat. There's a couple of reductions. The only one that, that I really, that stands out on a increase is ambulance supplies. And that's just because of, for multiple reasons. One, the hospital started charging us for medications, whereas years ago, they used to provide them for free. So we have to deal with that, and equipment inflation and everything else. And, you know, so we've asked to increase that. We're also, it seems like we're paying for more fees to the state sometimes than are coming out of that account as well. So we ask for, we're asking for a $5,000 increase. But a lot of the other categories, like I said, I tried to keep them the same or, or slight increases, like specifically, a lot of our utilities had slight increases that, you know, we were told by Electric or by, or by Hingham Light or by Seward to, you know, budget for 3% or 4%, whatever it was. And I think that is all I have.
Deputy Chief, did you want to add anything?
No, no. Chief did a good job. That's why I brought him.
We're going to write that down. So let me just begin with a couple of questions. I know that, and this is going to be both for fire as well as for police. You're involved, I think, from time to time assisting other towns. And to what extent does that assistance affect your budget? And I know it goes both ways because the other towns assist us.
Yep.
So if you can just comment on that.
Yep, he actually has some numbers on that.
So in calendar year '24, we gave mutual aid to other towns 400 times. Most of that is medical. There are some fires, but most of it is ambulance-related. And we do, we bill for those ambulance transports.
And are we receiving the aid as well?
Last year, 182 times, we had to call for assistance.
And again, most of that would be medical. Usually, the way it works on fire calls, there's very few communities around here, with the exception of like Boston and Cambridge and stuff like that, that can deal with a significant fire and not have mutual aid come in either to assist at the scene or to provide coverage from their stations, you know. And that's just, you know, that's the standard, the way we are built around here. So, you know, whenever there's a fire, then we may be able to handle the fire ourselves, but we usually need to rely on someone coming in to cover the other calls that are continuing to come in.
And a couple of times, you mentioned the new Public Safety Facility. To what extent does that new facility have an impact on your budget? Either in terms of changing personnel or operating costs or what's?
So from our perspective, not much. We've talked to KBA, the architect, and even going back a few years ago when they were projecting what the utilities were going to be for the building because of the fact that it's a modern building.
Right.
And has, you know, pretty, it's almost 100% green for, you know, the heating systems and everything else. So they actually kind of have indicated that they think it's actually going to be about the same as what we're currently paying for Station 2 now. So we haven't projected an increase in that. And from our perspective, there's no other staff that's going to get hired or anything else.
Okay. You mentioned that the department's relatively young and, you know, education and development is important.
Yep.
So I looked at the budget, and I see almost a 13% decrease in education. Why is that?
So that was something that I used to have placeholders for some of the new hires because sometimes our new hires are coming in with bachelor, or bachelor's degrees or better. better. So I had those placeholders that if we did hire them and to try, because we don't know where we're going to be on the payroll side, I actually removed those. So what you're seeing is actually a little bit more accurate reflective of everyone that has current degrees. I also, also used to have placeholders in there. If we knew someone was in school, then anticipating even if it was a year out, then if they came and finished the degree earlier or anything else. So we remove those because I'm trying to help with the budget any way we can, anticipating what we're going to have for payroll changes, so.
Great. Some other cost reductions that I see, a drop in scheduling software?
Yep.
Why, why is that?
So we're actually changing, oh, well, we're in the process of changing our scheduling software. It's also to do with some software that we're, we get through the Shrek, that's our fire reporting system.
Right.
And the, the new software is actually a little bit cheaper than what we were paying, but it's part of the same suite that we're using for, from the Shrek. So that's why it's about, I think it's five hundred dollars cheaper per year.
Right. And then there's a reduction in alarm services.
Yep.
So one thing when I, when you think of the fire department, if you want them to have alarms.
Yeah.
So why are we having a reduction in alarms?
I, that used to, that fee, that account used to cover other things besides just our maintenance, or I'm sorry, our monitoring, you know.
Okay.
And we haven't been using it for that. So the thousand dollars covers the monitoring. We actually contract with Eastern Alarm to maintain, to monitor the buildings. I think actually the, the town does for all of their buildings and that's actually reflective of the actual cost, whereas beforehand we used to have some other things to do with the fire alarm system built in there and stuff like that.
Okay. Before I turn it over to Liz and Bill, I just want to express what I've heard from residents, it's a real appreciation for the fact that they know that you're there and there's a high level of respect and confidence in the department. So, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure that they hear that.
Liz.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all you do. Your department obviously is critical to our community's safety and as Joe said, we all, we all feel it and appreciate it, so thank you. I appreciate you being conservative here, so we are obviously a tight budget cycle. The overtime seems low or constant, maybe I should say. Do you feel comfortable?
So the overtime, the way we've been doing it for several years is that is based on a certain number of hours of overtime.
Mm-hmm.
And then that's automatically calculated and based on the average overtime rate. So again, that hasn't changed because the overtime rate hasn't changed, you know. But once we do come in with new contract numbers, then that amount will increase, so.
Okay. So based on the rate per hour, but not, you're not estimating more overtime hours?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And hopefully we'll have more staff, right? Filling those four positions is, is the goal, I think. So happy to hear about the recruitment activities too. One other thing that I know we've talked about is every few years doing the ambulance rate study. Is that one of the initiatives for this year or has that been?
Actually, Michelle and I have been discussing that a little bit. We do have some numbers, we can talk about it, yes.
Okay, great. I'd like to review that, especially in light of some of the fees that you're seeing from the state and just see what we can cover there.
Okay.
But great, thank you.
Bill.
So echo what my colleague said, wonderful department, great leadership. I would add Dave in that conversation as well, but three of you do a great job, so thank you for all you do. On the recruitment issue, I know that this has been an issue we've been talking about now for about a year. Obviously, talked with you and Dave about recruitment for both departments. Last, last year, we actually put together that warrant article that allowed veterans to come on to a department four years later because of their military service, one year for each service. So, and Steve, you gave me that idea in our conversation. So if you have others, you know, let us know. We'll be happy to put forth a warrant article to expand our ability to bring more people on board. That article, that article was great for veterans and great for our department. So other ideas, we're all happy to listen to, for Dave as well.
Yeah, we're, I'm, we're, so like I said, the civil service language passed at the very end of the calendar year and we're still not certain, or I haven't heard what it's going to take to actually enact it, you know. And even the Civil Service Commission, one of the chiefs that's on it kind of said they're still trying to figure that out themselves. So once we do, I don't know whether or not to get into, opt into the fifty-fifty rule will require a town meeting vote or not, we're waiting to hear that, you know. So once we do hear more, I don't know if Chief Jones has heard anything recently, but once we do, then we'll make, make sure we get back to you on it too.
Great, thank you. So I, I hear from a lot of my friends in the department about the roofs, obviously, and the poor shape they're in. So the central fire roof is now done?
Not complete.
Almost, okay.
It's, it's almost. Like if you look, the, all of the work on the, most of the work on the back of the building is done, they're doing some of the, the trim and the fascia and stuff like that, and then a couple of the flat roofs, they're still working on it. But they've made great progress.
Almost there, yeah.
Yeah, we're getting there.
And, and did you say that we have money allocated to sell Hingham as well?
Yeah.
Excellent, great. And when, when you anticipate we'll start that work? I, I know that roof's pretty bad off. I've heard of buckets being placed on the ground for the, for the leaking and quicker we can do that, obviously the better, better our firefighters would be.
We have to go out to bid on hiring the project and everything else. So we've been working with Dave and JR to try to get the contractor to go out to bid on it and get some quotes and stuff. And most likely at this point, it would be springtime, they would be doing it.
Great. Lastly, an operational issue. Obviously with the, with the tragic events in California this past couple of weeks, I was reminded of the man, the fire on Main Street. And I remember, you know, we had like a very informal after action review, me, you and Tom talked about that fire. And I remember, Lou, you might have been part of the conversation as well, I remember concerns raised by you two gentlemen about water pressure, being up on a hill, being at a high point. I think you said it was, didn't impact the heroic efforts of your firefighters, putting the fire out, but it was a concern at one point. Do you have any concerns with water pressure in any other parts of town, particularly north Hingham that are at higher points? And is, you do have concerns, we should get Russ and we should get those done now.
I can tell you that Russ has been fantastic to work with on replacing hydrants and replacing and upgrading mains and in certain cases, removing valves that, you know, didn't necessarily help the system or anything else. So he's been fantastic. And I know that they've replaced several mains in, you know, the Crow Point area and everything else that, you know, should help that situation, so. But no, we don't, I don't have any, I mean, truthfully, there are a number of areas of town that don't have hydrants, you know, but that's a much, much bigger project, you know, because you're talking large areas with ledge and everything else that would be a substantial project to run the lines down. But I've discussed things like that with Russ before, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I know we have two deputy chiefs here. Do they, either one want to add anything? One who's virtual and one who's here.
Good, thank you.
Nope, all set.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to our budget request from the police department. Okay, if the two of you can introduce yourselves, please.
Evening. Of course, yes. David Jones, Chief of the Police Department.
David Petiti, Deputy Chief, Police Department.
Good to see you.
Same.
So please present your budget requests.
Hey, so thank you for having us here tonight and let's go through the slides here. The, the first slide, like the fire department, our mission doesn't really change every year over year. This is the same as it's been in previous years. This slide shows our, our mission and services and our core values for the police department. So this slide is our organizational chart. It shows who reports to, to who within the department. I'll get down to the breakdown of the numbers of people that are assigned in each, each position in another upcoming slide. So benchmarks, metrics, calls for service. So you'll notice there's a decrease in calls for service this year. Couple of things to point out, they're not a decrease in calls for service, a number, large portion of these are self-initiated, so like motor vehicle stops, et cetera. Reason for that is that we're down five police officers over the course of last year. We also lost two traffic officers who are highly trained officers, they're trained to a higher level than the regular officers, they do traffic enforcement, they're assigned to all shifts. So we lost two due to lateral transfers outside of our department. And we had several officers out on long-term leave. So that's reflective in that number there, but I'll just point out, it doesn't really show it here, but the calls for service into the police department have remained the same. This is total calls for service, including self-initiated activity that you're seeing on the screen here.
Got it.
So next slide. So this shows our statistics for court and citations. So we have a hundred and nineteen arrests, which is similar to what we had over the past years, almost two hundred criminal complaint applications, over fifteen hundred incident reports that the officers wrote. They issued three thousand five hundred and fifty-nine traffic citations, investigated four hundred and five motor vehicle crashes and issued two hundred and sixteen parking tickets. And that's calendar year twenty-four. So this slide here, breakdown of our staffing, I just want to take a second to really acknowledge the incredible work that the men and women that work for us do. We really have a incredible group of officers that, that work for me. And special thanks to the deputy chiefs that are here with me that make my job a lot easier and, and do a lot of behind the scenes work to make, make everything come true that we, that we do with our department. So we have one chief of police, two deputy chiefs. Deputy Chief O'Shea is in charge of administration and Deputy Chief Petiti is in charge of operations. We have four lieutenants, seven sergeants and thirty-nine patrol officers. Out of that, we have four of those are school resource officers, three are assigned to detectives and we have two officers assigned as canine officers. We have three professional staff. We have one administrative assistant, two, myself and the deputies. We have one records administrator and we have our mental health, community response clinician as well. We have two police canines on the road. We have one comfort dog who everyone knows, of course. We have nine school crossing guards and twenty-five part-time special officers that work for the department. So our community, key initiatives haven't really changed, community involvement, training. We're still sort of working through police reform. It's a constantly evolving process. They have, Post Commission has monthly meetings where they're rolling out new regulations that we have to comply with almost monthly. So that's a lot of work for, for the three of us to really, to really deal with. Every month, it's such a huge portion of what we're tasked, where the civil service that Chief Murphy mentioned, I think is a positive step. From what I've heard, it's going to be a memorandum of understanding between us and civil service, similar to what we do with the promotional exams, to the fifty-fifty hiring. They've got some meetings coming out next month, February. Civil Service and HRD are going to do some informational meetings to hold for the police and fire chiefs. So hopefully next month we'll have a little more information on that, but there's potential to make our recruitment and retention efforts a lot easier if, if that does come to fruition. Okay, next slide. So I just wanted to point out and acknowledge that we had two of our canines retired recently. We had Officer Bob Akili, who's on the, the left-hand screen there, had his canine partner, Pablo, served the department for a number of years, recently retired. And on the right, we have Officer Ryan Ross with Canine Peti, who just retired, or is in the process of retiring, he's still technically active, but he's, Officer Ross is in school right now with his new canine, name is Gary. He's getting out of school this month, I believe. So he'll be back on the road with his new partner shortly. Officer Akili didn't, not choose to move in the other dog, it's a tremendous amount of work and I have no idea how they do it. So the good news is that Pablo and Peti are both living their retirement lives, their best lives with their, at home with their families. So, you know, hopefully they get a lot, long life ahead of them and they'll get to enjoy their retirement. But Officer Lobianco took over Officer Akili's position and he has a canine lab also, similar to that one, a little smaller. So the budget numbers, so the personnel services, majority of those are contractual with the, with the unions. Like fire, we're in negotiations with both the Police Patrol and Superior Officers Union. They're currently, the rates that you're seeing are based on FY twenty-four numbers. So hopefully we'll have a contract settled with both unions shortly and we'll have those numbers updated. The overtime number, you'll see an increase there. The increase there isn't due to any increase in overtime that we're expecting, it's to account for what's called FLSA overtime. Our officers work a schedule, they work a four and two. And anything over a certain amount of hours, it's a hundred and seventy-one hours, we're supposed to calculate their overtime based on an FLSA rate, which encompasses everything, just not their, their hourly rate. So shift differential, longevity, educational incentive, things like that. So this year was the first full year that we did it, so that number is adjusted based on an estimate from this year's number. And that's something we're contractually obligated to pay the officers. Moving to expenses, a couple of things that I'd just point out there that the, that are changes from previous years, are significant changes, is computer service agreements. So recently, the, myself and the two deputies really sort of made an effort to consolidate the programs that we use to, to track our officers to a single vendor, sort of move it under one roof. Right now, we have a number of vendors that handle different aspects of our department, so there's scheduling, there's policy, there's professional standards, use of force, training. All these were different vendors because as they came out with electronic versions, there wasn't one vendor that did everything, they were all individual vendors. So what we're trying to do is, is consolidate the vendors under, under one platform so that the officers have one login, they don't have to remember six different logins like they do now and six different programs that, that the three of us have to go to to retrieve information on our officers. So this is a single vendor solution, which will allow us to, to track them across a number of, the number of the areas that I just mentioned. Also, this will assist with accreditation. The vendor that we've chosen, which is Power DMS, is the only vendor that's authorized to work with a state accreditation commission for police. So it'll certainly make our job, well, our job, Deputy O'Shea's job, a lot easier moving forward through the accreditation process. And this will also help us eliminate paper records. So it's going to digitize a lot of our, our record keeping. So it's going to save on that end as well. Prisoner care is, is down. That's not because we have less prisoners. It's just the, the cost of, of them and I've tried to bring it to a more realistic number based on the past year's actual numbers that we've used. So that doesn't indicate a decrease in the amount of prisoners that we have, it's, it's just trying to sort of true up that number to what we're actually spending. So, and that covers things like meals, the blankets and stuff that we have in the cells and anything that goes, goes along with housing prisoner. And that is it for the presentation. Any questions?
Deputy Chief, anything you wanted to add?
I'd just like to echo what Chief Jones said, recognize the hard work of the men and, of the men and women of the police department, of which without them, we wouldn't be here and be as successful as we are. I'm the older gentleman in the room, so I'll, I just want to point out the, the job has evolved. Training far exceeds the training that we got decades ago. The attention to officer wellness. We just dealt with serious situations and went back to work the next day and we didn't realize that it has cumulative effects. I want to acknowledge that we have lost people that have had to retire due to those cumulative effects. So I want to acknowledge that. We've come a long way. We deal with situations like that after the incidents. We attempt to help the officers work through that and I just want to acknowledge that, how those types of things have evolved.
Yeah, I mean, we all look up to our, our officers and sometimes forget that they're humans. And so it's great that you're recognizing that and assisting as needed. And so it's great that you're recognizing that and assisting as needed, so that's great. I'm going to start with basically two questions that I asked with respect to FIRE. The first one is mutual aid. To what extent does that affect your budget, either providing mutual aid or receiving?
So it does obviously have an impact on our budget. I didn't bring the numbers with me tonight, but we're part of the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, which we have officers assigned to, whether it's detectives or SWAT officers, that drone operators also, that respond to our mutually partners, communities. So there is a cost associated with that, but we also realize that when we have a large-scale event, we're able to call on them, and there's no cost to us. So, for example, town meetings, the Fourth of July, Christmas in the Square, road race, we have partners from outside our town that come and work for us, and there's no additional costs to this town. So it works both ways, so it pays for itself, basically.
And when we had the incident at Derby Street with the Apple Store, I know
Tremendously much.
Number of towns responded, so. And then the other question I asked was with respect to the new public safety building. To what extent does that affect your budget, moving in, change in energy costs or officer costs, just in general? What impact would that have?
So we're not anticipating any changes in operational, the way that we run the department. The utilities is sort of up in the air of who's going to cover that. We think it's going to be covered by the FIRE, since they already have that in their budget. So I don't think there'll be an impact on our budget specifically for utilities, but that's an open discussion that's sort of ongoing right now.
With respect to the computer service agreements that you mentioned, is that coordinated through our IT department?
So they do, so these are all, most of these currently, with the exception of our computer dispatch system, are cloud-based, so they're web-based. So the computer dispatch one is a physical program that's installed on the computers. The new system they're going to, best of my knowledge, is
It is all cloud-based, right?
So Hexagon. So that will also be not a physical program installed, but they're all web-based. So they are involved because they have to obviously allow the programs to communicate with the town network. So they are directly involved whenever we go with a new vendor. The vendor that we're talking about, that's going to, we're going to bring everybody under, we already use for certain portions of our documentation, so they already work with them. They are familiar with them right now.
And one question I should have asked FIRE, but I'll ask you now. To what extent are we proactively protecting against cybersecurity threats?
So we work directly with town IT to protect the network and the infrastructure. As far as residents and things like that, we try to push out as much information as we can. There's so many scams and things going on right now, trying to entrap residents. The newest one's an EZ Pass scam that's going around now, and unfortunately, a lot of people have been caught up in it, where a text comes across unsolicited, saying that you all wanted the EZ Pass. They give you a link, you log on, and pay. You think you're paying the state, but you're actually paying the scammer. So we're doing a lot of education on that end, but as far as our internal security, that's handled by the town IT department.
I've actually gotten several of those texts, both on my personal phone and town phone.
As have I.
And of course, they go right to trash.
Yes.
Yeah, it's going around. Liz, questions?
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here and the presentation and all that you do. I'm continually impressed with the department and all that you do for our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
You, so I understand about the wages, and obviously those are the FY '24 numbers. The FLSA that you mentioned, how is that tracked and administered?
So it's tracked through our payroll, our scheduling software.
Okay.
So it's a 15-day cycle, and we run a report on the 15th day of that previous period, and it breaks out the regular overtime and then the amount of hours that are owed for FLSA overtime.
Okay, so you're not trying to do that manually?
Thank God, no.
My point. Okay, good. And just to build on what Joe was saying in terms of the computer service agreements and IT, obviously, this is not in the IT budget. We're not kind of double-counting this, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. And so before you even mentioned that, I was thinking earlier today, kind of all the costs associated with the accreditation process. This obviously is part of it. Are there other line items that are directly linked to the accreditation process?
Unfortunately, Deputy O'Shea will be the one to speak to that, but, you know, it's training, policy review. They have to physically touch every single policy and go through it, so there is hours that are spent doing that between the deputy, and he has assistants that are helping through the process. I don't believe there's any things that we need to purchase, if that's what you're asking for accreditation.
Yeah. And obviously, that's a priority for us, and we want to go through that process. I'm assuming there's no aid or grants or anything to help departments fulfill that?
Yeah, we're constantly looking. There's companies that will come out and assist with accreditation that only cost more money. So Deputy O'Shea has actually worked with the Accreditation Commission as an evaluator for departments that are being accredited, so it's enormous help for us.
Great.
He's out in Marshfield today and tomorrow doing accreditation for them. So it's an enormous help having him part of that commission, being able to bring that knowledge back and work through the accreditation process here, which is in a really good position.
Excellent. Different topic, the shift differential, is that also part of the CBAs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a differential for the 4:12 shift, the midnight shift, and then what's called the relieve shift, which goes and relieves the officers on two of the shifts.
Okay. And I know you mentioned the mental health clinician, who we're so grateful she's here. What, do you have a sense of her bandwidth? Like, is she getting to all the calls that she needs to be on, or do we need more people like her in that role?
Yeah, she's able to handle her call line. I know she works closely with the town's clinician as well. So, yeah, and we've obviously expressed to her that if she's getting burnt out or anything, to come to us and let us know. She constantly communicates with us upstairs and lets us know, you know, updates on cases that she's working on, et cetera. So right now, she's able to handle the call line that she has.
Okay, excellent. She's certainly a valued resource that we're very grateful for.
Incredible resource.
Excellent. No more questions. Thank you.
Bill.
Thank you. I think that's the first HPD presentation I've seen in quite a long time that didn't have a picture of Opry somewhere, strategically located in there. You know, usually get her in the July 4th parade or something.
I can live with so many dogs.
Yeah. A couple of points in terms of recruitment. So where do we end up with recruits in the academy? Did we end up with four, three?
Great. So right now, we have four.
Oh, we've got four? Good, good.
Yeah, we have Ryan Hogan that we just hired a few weeks ago. We have the three that we had hired in a previous round. So the academy right now is scheduled for mid-March. It's the META Transit Academy in Quincy. It's an academy that we prefer to send our officers to. It's a really good product. So I'm grateful that we're able to get these officers in there. So right now, the four of them are scheduled to go into that academy in mid-March.
Mid-March. And is it a six-week, eight-week?
I wish. It's five, almost six months.
Oh, it's six months? Wow.
And then they have three months of field training minimum after that. So we've got, after March, we've got nine months till they're onboard.
Till they're onboard, yeah. Okay, great. Well, Deputy Chief Petiti, your point about wellness is well-taken to us. So, you know, we're all fully aware of what you do and what you see. So if there are resources needed to help your officers that you don't have, you know, please let us know, and we will ensure that the resources are there to help people, because your point is very well-taken.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so please let us know that. And my last, my last point is, you know, thank you all for your leadership, Ryan as well, and we're just thrilled to get you in that new building, and to get your offices in that new building, and to get our police department the modern, state-of-the-art building that you all deserve and that you need. So the spring can't come fast enough for us to open those doors and to move you from here over there.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we share the same sentiment, and they're going to be thrilled to be over there. It's really an incredible facility that's over there. I just went over there beginning of last week and did a walkthrough, and the progress that's made week to week over there is just incredible. Excellent, excellent.
Awesome. And you have a great view of the waterfront, Dave.
Certainly, yes.
Yes? And you have one of 3A?
Yes. I'll just beg, I've said before that all three of us want an ocean view, so they have a view of the ocean, Kai, I have a view of the
You have to be more specific.
They let me pick first, so it was a mistake.
Lesson learned.
Just one point to follow up on Bill's emphasis on recruiting. If there's anything that this board can do to assist in recruiting, because I know it's been tough. And in part, hopefully, the new facility will assist, but making sure that you, your department is adequately staffed is a priority for this board. So we will be looking into that.
Great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Now, we're not quite finished with police, because we have the harbor master division of the police department coming up. And if the two of you can introduce yourselves, please.
Certainly. Ken Corson, I'm the harbor master.
And Joe Driscoll, I'm the head assistant harbor.
And please, now, let's hear your request.
Certainly. So I guess I'd like to just let everyone know that we're basically having a level-funded budget, other than certain increases for staff. So we're really not looking for any additional increase in funding. But I'd like to just start out by kind of explaining what we do as harbor masters. Not a lot of people might know that, or some people might be new to hearing about us. But we perform police functions on the water, as well as fire functions, medical functions, and we also do the overall management and maintenance for different harbor-type things. So we, you know, for instance, search and rescue is one thing we do. That's a reactive-type thing. And then we do a lot of proactive-type stuff, such as port waterways, coastal security, marine safety, that's when we're out in patrol, checking on boats, making sure they're all following the regulations, and boats are properly outfitted for their voyage, not to any people, and stuff like that. This is the breakdown of staffing for the harbor master's office. I report to Ryan, Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea, and then underneath me, we have head assistant Joe Driscoll, who's full-time. So really, a department of two full-time staff, and then we have 17 part-time people that come in mainly for the boating season. Sometimes they work outside of that. Of those part-time assistants, we have, kind of categorize them to three different groups. Some of them are more trained, but not police officers, so they can do search and rescue. And then we have more of an entry-level position where they're doing, more of the harbor management. They're out there doing pump-outs, collecting mooring fees and stuff like that. As they, you know, progress through roles and learn different things, then we kind of upgrade them to the search and rescue component. But they're not police officers, so there's certain things they can't do. We don't really want them stopping boats, activating blue lights unless they're just going to assist us and stuff like that. So then we have the third category, which is assistant harbor masters that are also police officers, and then we have some police officers and sergeants from the patrol division that now help us out on the water. So that's been really good. That started this past summer, so we have an overtime budget to cover them. And they bring a lot of knowledge from the land and to the water, and now they've been also learning a lot about what we do and the differences. So it's been, it's really been a great interaction. But I do want to comment, because a lot of, especially the police officers that work and the other assistants, you know, that's all going to be weekend-type work. So if we have a police officer coming out on overtime, they're taking their weekend or weekend day from the few that they have off to come out there and work. So it is overtime, but they're also sacrificing a lot to come out and assist us, and we really appreciate that, because we need the help. And with police reform, it's become more and more challenging. We used to hire, you know, college-age kids. We'd put them through a part-time police academy, and then we'd be able to put them out there. But with police reform, we can't do that. So it's made it a little bit more challenging for us. So we really run a, it's a department of two full-time staff, 17 part-time. We gear up for about six months for the boating season, and, you know, we staff about 16 hours a day, seven days a week, and then we have overnight response for emergencies, where Joe or I will come out and get onto the water quickly to address any issues that come up. This is the waterways, and I've had this slide up for a number of years, so you might be familiar with it. But I'd just like everyone to realize that Hingham Water is not just the little area down in the inner harbor by the rotary where you see that little island. So if you look at letter A there, that's the inner harbor, looking out to that first island. So a lot of people think that's Hingham Harbor, and that is part of it, but we actually go quite a distance out to Bumpkin Island by area D, and then area E's over by World's End, and then C is the shipyard. Letter B being pro-point. So you can see there's quite a bit of waterways, there's about 26 miles of coastline if you trace it all out. We keep two boats in the shipyard. Again, that's area C, and then we keep one boat in the inner harbor, so if we get a nighttime call or something like that, we can choose the closest location. World's End over by area E there is probably the busy, one of the busiest places in town in the summer, on the weekends. We can have 400 to 600 boats in there rafting, enjoying the location, coming from all over Boston metro region area. We've worked over the last couple of years to kind of manage the crowds and the rafting, and we've done a great job of that, so I've heard a lot of people saying, hey, they're really enjoying the experience over there more. And we keep continuing to try to address any issues that come up, but it's really cleaned itself up a lot, and it's been great. We do have five islands, just quickly. There, you can see there's four in the inner harbor down by A, and then Bumpkin. Two of Bumpkin and Langley are, have camping, so we have campers that will go out to them. We manage the campers on Langley, and then the DCR manages all camping on Bumpkin.
Has Hall agreed yet that Bumpkin is in fact ours?
I don't think so, yeah.
I told you to plant the flag years ago.
We make our presence known. So this is kind of a list of the various calls that we've responded to in the past year, calendar year. It varies a little bit year to year, but, you know, most of them kind of remain the same. A couple of things that I'll just point out on here, the code 104, that's a new thing that we've started to provide as a service. That's the radiological and nuclear detection. It's through a grant with Boston. It doesn't cost us any money, provides some great training and equipment. And the way we're really following to that is because of the ferry terminal, and also a very active boat ramp with short commute times to Boston. So it's a service we provide on the waterways. We can also use it on land. A couple of police officers and sergeant are trained in it, so we try to make it as available and use it as much as we can. We also, you'll see, we get some 911 calls, but those, we don't just get 911 calls. Sometimes people call us on a landline, and we take a lot of calls, emergency calls via radio. They're on their boat, they pick up a radio, and they call us directly. We also brought out the clinician this year. That was the first time we've actually brought a clinician out. We had a porter come in that thought they were going to live on the boat, and we brought the clinician out to help deal with that situation, and that was very helpful, helped us resolve it pretty quickly. And then you'll also see harbor management statistics. So we, that's another aspect of what we do, is managing all the boats. We station them, and we have about, it's pretty consistent every year, it's about 1,300 more boats that we have. Those are on moorings and on slips. Our transient boats, you'll see 427, that's the total number, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's like the total number of boats that have come in and rented a moor. That doesn't include boats that are on anchor without paying, making a payment. So it's just people that stay on our moorings. So we have four moorings in World's End, and one in the inner harbor, is that right? Two in the inner harbor. So basically, it's
One o' langley.
Okay, so it's like seven moorings or so that accommodate these 427 transient boats during the summer months. Mainly, it's really July and August, a little bit in June, and then a little bit beyond that. Pump-out hours, that's the number of hours we spend, our pump-out boat spends going around pumping waste out of boats and then bringing it to shore. We pumped about 281 boats and over 5,000 gallons of sewage. Doesn't cost a porter anything. It's a reimbursable grant that we get, both federal and state. They reimburse about 75% of the costs, but we have such a strong program that it actually reimburses a little bit less because we do so much work. Next slide, please. So this is our revenues. We do generate So this is our revenues, we do generate revenues from mooring fees, mooring rental fees and some other, some other fees. You'll see that it looks like, I think it's down there at the bottom, you'll see it was two fifty-eight, I think that's 2017. You'll see that the, the fees went up for over a four year period. That's due to a fee schedule that we had in place, and then at about twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, it should have gone up a little bit higher, but due to pandemic, we weren't really able to get out there and, and do mooring permit enforcement, which is going to every boat, checking to see if they have a permit, if they don't, we issue a warning, then we go back, if they still don't have the permit, we issue a fine. That accommodates, that accounts for about thirty to forty thousand dollars of revenue, us just going out there, locating these boats without a permit. So you can see that we went up to about three hundred and seventy-four thousand, it was a dip, we were short staffed that year, we weren't able to really get out there, properly evaluate it, and then you see it comes back up. So again, that's about thirty, forty thousand dollars that we get just from doing the enforcement. That's a fair amount of work, sending staff out, checking the boats, again, going back, issuing a ticket, and then having all those permit requests come in during the summer and processing them. You'll see a couple, I'll just kind of point out a couple of the key initiatives. One thing I've been trying to start up for a number of years, and we didn't get to it last year, but hopefully this year, is boating education course. It's not a long course, it's about ten hours, but I think it's very important, and now that we have a little bit more staff level, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get that offered this spring, maybe one to two courses. You'll see there's a number of upcoming events and different things that we're working on. I'll point out that we did get a humane society grant for twenty thousand dollars, or fifteen thousand dollars, I believe it is, we still need a match to come up for the rest of that, and that will allow us to train with Boston Fire on fire response for vessels in marinas. We've done it before, but they weren't really in marinas, the, the fire response, they're boats underway and different things like that, though this is specifically in a marina, which our vessel pumps six hundred gallons of water, so it's perfectly outfitted for responding to a marina, but we do have fires and so forth, we need more advanced equipment that would come from either Boston Fire or Massport Fire. So that's why we're going to work with Boston Fire on that, and the Hingham Fire, Fire Department will also be included. So we're trying to work on that for the spring, and then 2026, we have Sail Boston coming up, it's two years out, but the whole port's trying to get ready for that, it's a very big event, a lot of taller ships coming in. So in order for something like that to take place, it requires all port partners to work together, have equipment ready, and personnel ready, and trained, and so forth. So we're getting ready for that, because that will be a big event, and then, you know, 2029, we'll be talking about training. So I just wanted to put some images of the boats and where they are. On the left there is Marine One, that's a thirty-one foot safe boat, was new in 2011. You can see the fire monitor on the, on the bow there, that reddish type object there, and then just behind it is a hatch that comes up, there's a big engine in there, diesel engine that will pump the six hundred gallons of water. We have forward looking infrared on this boat, it has new engines, and then the boat to the right is a newer boat, it's about three years old, it's a twenty-five foot safe boat, it also has forward looking infrared, and it also has radiation detection built in it, so when it's out in patrol, that's on, steady state, it'll just be analyzing, and if it detects something, it'll alarm for us to investigate further. And those are the new jet docks that we got these last couple of years, they've been excellent, it's really great to be able to pull a boat up on them, get them out of the water, cut down on some corrosion, especially Marine One, we've had some corrosion on the bottom. It allows us to get around, clean them, evaluate them, do maintenance, so it's been a really great asset to have those jet docks. These are a couple images of the boats underway and what they look like, so the top left-hand corners, that's Marine One, that's the cockpit, I guess we could call it that. It, you'll see on the right sides, the helm for whoever's operating it, see a computer in the middle, above the computer, a bunch of radios, we have two screens for navigation, one in front of each helm there, and then on the left side, that's where we can run the fire pump and other equipment. The image on the right, it's kind of hard to tell here, but that's actually pulling up alongside a ferry during a training drill, and you can see officers coming off our boat and boarding the ferry during a drill. The bottom left is Marine Two, and that was out for a training with CTOSS, which is Counter Terrorism Operational Support, and that's one of the radiation detection backpacks that, that we have. And then the bottom right is an image from the flare camera at nighttime, so if it was dark, you wouldn't see that, but that's the image you have with the flare camera, so you can make out what's going on before you get there, number of people, where they are, and so forth. So number wise, like, like I said, the, the increases that you see for staff are step increases. The clerk, there's a little bit of an adjustment there, he works twenty-four hours a week, it's a budgeted position for twenty-six, and the other two hours are usually filled in by other assistants when he's out during the boating season and stuff, so that there's someone there to answer the phone, and, and so forth. So there's the adjustment there, and then everything else is level funded for this year. One way I was able to get to the level funding, I'll point that out, is we did get a grant this year for fifteen thousand dollars to assist with different equipment, so it'll, it'll assist with, well, our operating budget to meet some of the needs that we have, so that's why I felt comfortable not making increases.
Yes, you've given us a flat budget, this, it's hard to question that. Again, this is, this is one of the services that not just residents in the town, but the boating community at large really appreciates. I have a question about your plans for the fees that we collect from boaters. Are you looking to do an assessment about whether or not they should be changed, and over what time period are you looking to have that assessment?
Yes, so we, we are in the process of evaluating that, and as I was putting the budget together, especially today, I spent some time looking back on my notes from what we talked about this past fall, and I think we'll get you another proposal shortly, I'm going to work with Tom on, you know, some different aspects of how we'll present that, and what we'll be looking to do for the different characteristics, okay, this, these things will trigger fee increase and how that will look, so we'll get that to you in timely fashion.
Liz, any questions?
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you for all you do, and thank you for the presentation. Related to the new fees, I think we talked about using the DACA system, do you, I don't see a line item for technology, do you usually have a line item?
Yeah, so if you look in the, in the budget, it's under professional services.
Okay.
So you'll see fourteen thousand dollar allotment, that's what we use for, that's all used for a web based system to manage the mooring permits, which bring in all of our revenues. So this past fall, we did make the switch to DACA from online mooring, which we've used for a number of years, so we're working through that transition process, it's, it's been smooth, I think it'll provide a more user friendly environment for the boaters.
Yeah.
It's limited for us in some of the things we like to do, but they've been great with working us to, with us to try to accommodate some of the needs on, on the backend.
Okay.
But we've made that transition, and I'm hoping that that will also help us out with mooring rentals.
Yeah, I think it will, it's a great user experience. So that, so that's just a flat, there's no increase to us in terms of the, the technology charge?
Yeah, there won't be any increase, the way it worked out this year for the transition is they came in a little bit beneath the fourteen thousand for the contract for the year, and then next year, we'll probably be at the fourteen.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know questions, great job, Ken, thank, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
That's it, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We move to animal control.
So where Chief Jones didn't include Opry, we made sure Wesley's was full of good animal pictures, she always has the best ones.
I almost had her with me tonight, so you would just walk her overnight.
So the two of you can introduce yourselves for the record, please.
I am Leslie Badger, I'm the animal control officer and animal inspector.
Ryan O'Shea, Deputy Chief, in the Police Department.
So please, give us your request.
So as the animal control officer, my, and animal inspector, my missions and services are pretty much like the police and fire department, where everything is, year after year is pretty much the same. I'm responsible for the domestic animals in town, wildlife, barn yard, I'm also in charge of keeping an eye on the off leash program for Bearco Park, I'm also in charge of keeping an eye on our wildlife, especially our coyote program, and making sure if anyone has any issues with that, to step in and try and help them the best I can. I'm also, as the animal inspector, I make sure kennel inspections, barn inspections, quarantines, all of those get taken care of. So that in a nutshell is my, what I do as animal control and animal inspector, so we can kind of, so in my chart, I actually, I, I do report to Deputy O'Shea, but it's me. Sometimes Opry's my assistant.
That's a dotted line.
So, yeah. So these are some of the things over the last year that I have either rescued or taken care of, that is a, a brand new snapping turtle, and then the kitten is from, I was a mutual aid with another town in a law enforcement case, kitten is healing up, it was, I was called out for Thanksgiving. That is something else as the animal control officer, just like police and fire where they offer mutual aid, I myself also offer mutual aid, and that can be anything from emergency situation, they need extra hands, to covering when an animal control officer for another town is away, and then they reciprocate, cover for me when, when I'm off. In a year and a half ago, I got in my new truck, it is in great shape, and it's going to be about, I think it's going to be two years that I've had it in February, I'm sorry, in April, and it's still working perfectly. I'm very thankful to the chief and the deputies for allowing, and you all as well, for allowing me to have this vehicle, it has helped tremendously in doing my job. It also comes in handy as I am an officer too for the police department, so when they need an extra set of hands, whether it's helping with traffic, blocking a road for traffic when there's an accident, or a big scene, or getting to someplace a lot quicker, sometimes there's calls where someone's in a home and police and fire need to get in there, and an animal's at the door acting aggressively, and I can get there a lot quicker having the lights and sirens. Or if, again, another call comes in for mutual aid, and they say that they need assistance in an extra ACO immediately, I can get there a lot quicker than I could before, so. And then to talk about my, my benchmarks, the calls in the last year, I had three hundred and sixty-three, ten citations, nineteen quarantines, fifteen barns, eight kennels, and about thirty-four loose dogs. So again, we went over my initiatives, a lot of it is educating and enforcement, this, we had this last year, and then when I'm not educating and enforcing, it is helping with wildlife that come in, sometimes it comes in as injured, or it could be a nuisance. I do see a lot of injured, so these are a few of the animal calls that I've gotten, and I either bring them to rehabs, or if need be, humanely put them down if they are sick or severely injured and can't be rehabbed. So that is a part of my job that I, I have to do. The coyote, actually, that is before it was released, they are very nervous, and that's what we want, in order for them, it's not released in Hingham, I'll make that clear, I was assisting another ACO, he never releases coyotes before, so he asked me to come over and assist him, and we want them to be that afraid looking when we're releasing them, because we don't want them to be released being comfortable around humans and acting like a dog in a kennel, like, hey, how are you, and opening the door, we want them to be very fearful and uncomfortable around humans, so. So those are some of them, and the Fisher cat was a call for in someone's yard. So my budget, pretty much, I don't have any major requests, and my budget is pretty status quo, I work really hard, I'm very conscious of my budget and trying to stay within it, I try and find ways as well. I'm lucky in the animal world to have resources I can reach out to, sometimes I'm able to find, like, sometimes they, the state will have offerings if, like, we have an animal come in, and if it's not within budget, I can reach out and say, is this something that you can help with, this animal, especially if it's a domestic pet, is worth saving, is there any funding that could help? So I have those opportunities. Other things, I'm one of the few ACOs that is trained in, how do I see this lightly, in prepping an animal to go to the state lab for testing for rabies, and that, if I sent it out to, whether it was like a VCA or New England Wildlife, that could cost the town anywhere from two fifty up to five hundred dollars, and I take care of the whole process from prepping it to sending it all the way up there, because there's the cost to prep it, and then there's the cost to have a courier drive it up there and drop it off to them, so I sometimes take care of all that, I normally take care of all that myself, unless there's other emergencies going on and I have to be here for it, then I'll either drop it at the Wildlife Center or VCA, but those are very few and far between, usually I can handle those. So I, I try very hard to find ways within my training and resources to be able to stay within my budget.
So are you sure there're not three of you, because there's so much, there's so much that you do, and everyone knows that you're, you're the person, and they're all so thrilled, so, but, but you're everywhere, how, how do you do this?
I mean, I, I am on call twenty-four hours a day for emergencies, and I just, all I can do is my best, that I can, I just try my best.
We did increase ACO Badgers' hours last year, so we could keep doing that. But we're really, really fortunate to have such a dedicated and professional animal control officer, so really lucky as a town and as a department to have our own port.
Absolutely. Any update on coyotes, you've, you mentioned them a couple of times, and it's, it's, it's something that at least I've heard from residents, oh, you know, they're around, and what do we do, and I know you've been out there in terms of education, but how's the town doing?
I don't want to jinx it, we, coyotes are definitely there, they're in every town, they're, they're in every, they're all over, but the town is doing really good, because I, I try to educate as much as I can about securing those food sources, and also harassing them, and not letting them feel comfortable in your yard, and that seems to be helping, plus they seem to move around a lot too, so I, I keep an eye on when I hear other towns saying that they're seeing a lot in an area, I keep an eye on to see if they're going to make their way back, because we, we do, and we're going into the season where it's mating season, and soon we'll have the babies, so we'll see them even more, we're, we're in winter, it's cold, they're looking for food, but they're also a little bit quieter, so we, I do get the calls, I go out, monitor the area, check in with folks, and then I try and talk to all the neighbors, let them know, I still to this day, if you want to get all your neighbors together, I'm happy to, to do a group educational meetup, otherwise, if you want to spread around, this is the information, this is where you can get more from the state and, and other wildlife professionals, so I think that's helping a lot too, because people are starting to be aware of, okay, I've got a food source that I should secure, and that's keeping the wildlife out, or I see, instead of letting it sunbathe in my yard, I immediately scare it off, and that, that helps a lot.
Liz, any questions?
Excellent, well, thank you, and thank you for all you do, we certainly are, are lucky to have you, and it does feel like there's many of you. And I know you are great about responding to social media as well, but that's very difficult to monitor all the time, what is the best way to, to reach you?
That's a great question, I try to put it out there as well, I try to stay off of social media as much as possible, but sometimes there's situations that come up that I feel do warrant trying to, to calm it down before it turns into something that it doesn't need to be, because I find sometimes the social media, it will, like, it, it just turns into this growing thing, and you're like, that's not what happened. So I, or panic sets in, like, oh my God, I saw a coyote, and it was, nope, or, you know, so, I don't, I apologize for going off track, but I, I try to be very careful about not being on it much. it much, but when I am, it's for specific reasons. And I always try and make sure people realize. The best way to contact me, if you need me immediately, is to call 911 or 749-1212, and that would be through the police department, and they can get ahold of me. They can evaluate the situation, and let, especially if I'm off-duty, and let the person know that if they need to get ahold of me, I can come out. Otherwise, as soon as she's back in in the morning, we'll relay a message to her. Otherwise, my voicemail is always open, and they can leave a message, and I can get back to them. And that's the 781-749-1490.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. No questions about the budget.
Bill?
Yeah, Leslie, without a doubt, you are one of our most popular employees in the town. And as Liz said, your responsiveness is fantastic, your hard work is very much appreciated. I mean, you always help residents who need you, and the dedication to what you do is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So you're getting off light. But no, really, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, can I just jump in this real quick? I want to reminisce for two seconds. There was this, an incident here at Town Hall about two years, three years ago last week, where just outside my office, there was a swarm of about 50,000 bees, I think, showed up one day. And within an hour of my call, there was Leslie in the, I don't know, the fire truck, I believe, in a full bee suit, trying to coax all the bees out of the attic upstairs. So, you know, it's not just coyotes and dogs and cats, it's any, any critter that crawls or flies or roams this town.
I don't necessarily do insects, but if I see honeybees, then I try to get, you know, I, without a doubt, I'll try and get an O P keeper and try and resolve that, because we need our honeybees. So, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move on to Shrek.
Thank you.
Good, guys. See you later.
So, Tom, you're the Green Monster?
I am. So this is the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, otherwise known as Shrek. This is the 911 center for the four, for the regional area of the four towns of Norwell, Hingham, Cohasset, and Hull. About six, nine months ago, somewhere in that window, Phil Lemnius retired as the town manager in Hull, and my peer communities subsequently voted me as chair of the Shrek board. So I am acting in that capacity on the town's behalf, but also on behalf of the whole region. So I enjoy doing that. I could tell you, this budget is pretty straightforward. This is the preliminary budget, right? This is just like every other preliminary budget hearing. We, we always anticipate a 5% increase in the Shrek operations. That is what this budget proposes right now. That will be refined when I come back with my town administrator hat on and making the more broad-spectrum recommendations town-wide for all the departments. So, it'll be refined then. We've had two budget meetings on the Shrek board. We have our final one coming up in two weeks that will inform the final, the final budget. But this is a placeholder budget of a 5% increase.
And what's the town's percentage participation in the Shrek budget?
So it's done by assessment. It varies from town to town. It's a combination, and we're doing it slightly different this year, but it's generally a combination of the populations, a proration of the populations, and then a proration of the call volume for each town.
Do you know what the percentage was?
I want to say we're around 50%, and the other three towns are dividing the remaining 50% in varied ways. That's a rough estimate.
And Shrek pays rent to the town, am I correct, for the space?
Yes.
And do we increase the rent each year, about 5%?
Roughly. We certainly could try that. The, we did it last year, or two years ago?
Last year and this year coming up.
Yeah, we reevaluated the market rate for office space in this part of town, and we adjusted our rates. It was the first time in several years it had been done. So instead of hitting the Shrek with a very large increase in one year, I split it over two years. We increased last year to match that number, or to get half, half of that increase in this year with the other half. What I can talk to my board members about is an annual escalator to match some metric that we...
It would be, I think, very common on almost any commercial lease to have an annual escalator.
Yeah.
So I would encourage that here.
Absolutely. Yep, makes sense.
Liz, any questions?
So you mentioned that the budget meeting is in two weeks. I'm assuming this is based on a formula, and we don't really have any influence on...
That's right.
Okay.
Although this year, the board and, we've been working to try to smooth out any, any annual spikes in assessments for any given year. So what we're doing is, we're, while the main, the assessment is in the main affected by those two metrics, like I just mentioned, the population and call volume, we're also doing it across a three-year average, so that if there is any spike in one given year of a call volume for a community, that they don't just get hit with a $20,000 increase. And that's a very difficult, 10% or 12% increase in any given year. It's difficult to assume that. So we're trying to average it out, and it would be, it would work for all, all four communities if we did that appropriately. So that's what we're talking about now. We haven't implemented it yet, but that's what we're talking about.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I know questions on the Shrek budget. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I believe that concludes our department budget requests, and we can move on to discussion and possible votes of the 2025, on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant articles. And the first one, Article A, Tom, you're gonna walk us through the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund?
Sure. So, in some recent years, we had done a submittal process, but this year we're anticipating not doing that, and having you guys simply take these articles up as they come in. The submittal is formally done through our office. So, that said, the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund article annually is our first article traditionally. This is a program that was started back in the early 1900s by a concerned citizen who put some money aside for folks in need in South Hingham. And every year since, we have been identifying a three-member committee to evaluate those needs of individuals and providing some relief in the form of, of funds that are generated from the base principal amount of $15,000 donated by Ada Bacon back in 1915. So this year, the proceeds were 1,617 dollars and 89 cents, and those will be, those will be distributed in FY '25.
Yep. And so the person who, to be put on the committee?
Yes, this year is Laura Boyle, I believe, right?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Kathy Glenzel.
Kathy, Kathy Glenzel, that's right.
And she's expressed an interest, and you're satisfied that this would be an appropriate...
Yes. Yep. She used to actually work in our, in our senior center, our, excuse me, the Center for Active Living.
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
Yeah, so all this comes up every year, and just, just to be clear, so the, the town doesn't, doesn't allocate any money, we just allocate, the town meeting is responsible for the leadership.
Exactly. Yep. And then the leadership has their meetings, and they decide, I guess they get applications, and they decide how to divide up the proceeds.
It's a 501(c)(3)? Must be, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, no? Okay.
I think it's a trust fund of the town.
Yeah. I could double-check that. I could double-check.
I'm just curious. I know it's, it's an article.
Funny, I never thought to ask that.
Well, it's a great article to start town meeting with, because it's always unanimously voted in. Hey, we're off to a good start.
That's right. Exactly.
Okay, so I will take a motion on Article A.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article A.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Approved. We move to Article B. Tom, that's for you as well.
So this is the annual DCR article. This article, actually, ironically, is, while we take it up second today, it's traditionally the last article of, of the warrant at town meeting. This is, DCR requires the town, if they're gonna do any work in and around the title areas in town, they require towns to have adopted a, an article that puts, that has the town assume any liability for any work that they do.
So this is, the town assumes the liability for all damages to property sustained by any person who's, as a result of the work performed by DCR?
That's right.
Yes. I've got no questions, Liz?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
I'll take a motion on Article B.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article B.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. We move to Article C.
So Article C is the, is the annual article for the reports of town committees. This is often presented in the form of the annual report, and this is a list of all of the town meeting-formed committees is on this list here. There are other committees that get added into the annual report, just so we can be as, you know, fully transparent to the public as possible. But the ones that are required are here, and they are the town meeting committees. And they are all present. We've reviewed that, and it is an up-to-date list.
And are there any of these committees that it would be appropriate to thank them and to propose that the committees no longer continue meeting?
There's some, there's some discussion about the appropriate status of the existing senior center building committee, and whether or not that one might change the scope a bit, and perhaps be best if it were repositioned and reformed. But that hasn't, that decision hasn't formally been made, but that's, that's one that could be done.
Okay. But this article is simply to accept the reports of those committees?
That's right.
Okay. I've got no other questions, Liz?
No questions.
Bill?
I'll make a motion, no, no questions.
Then you can make the motion.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article C.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. We move to Article, we move to Article H. Michelle, dispersment of electric light department receipts.
Sure. So this is also a perennial article, and it's essentially appropriating back to HMLP all the revenue that they generate in a particular year, so that they can run the plant and provide electricity to the town. But importantly, in the recommended motion, it also allows the town to take a pilot payment from HMLP or receive that, a payment in lieu of taxes, since they are tax-exempt. That is typically around $500,000, but there's a minimum of $450,000, and it's based on kilowatt-hours sold the year before by the plant.
Got it. No questions, Liz?
No questions.
Bill?
None.
Then I'll take a motion on Article H.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article H.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an I as well. We move to Article J. And Jennifer Young, oh, there you are.
Hello.
The Center for Active Living Revolving Fund.
Yes.
Please explain it to us.
Okay, so this is, as Michelle used, I will repeat, the perennial article request for approval on the expenditure cap for our recreation revolving account. In December, December 10th, 2024, the Council on Aging did approve this request, and I'm here today just submitting this article to you for approval. So, the request was amended from the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant and reads as follows: Will the town limit the total amount that may be spent from the Center for Active Living Revolving Fund established under Article 16 of the general bylaws to $80,000 during fiscal year 2026, or act on anything related thereto? So this is the fund where we deposit any revenue that comes from registration fees, and we then in turn use those funds as expenses to pay out for the services.
Right. And what is the dollar amount of that fund?
The typical expenditure cap?
No. What's the balance of the fund?
The balance of the fund, to date, is running very close, it's, it's, it's running very thin. What we've noticed over the past couple of years is that there's been a rise in the cost of doing business.
Yep.
And we have not in turn turned those increases over to our seniors. So what we are doing is some creative budgeting, and we are offsetting some programmatic costs with funds from both our donation account, as well as our annual state formula grant account. So we, to date, we've generated eight, that we generated $10,663 in the account, and we have spent $18,000 in expenditures, but as I mentioned, those costs are offset with formula and donation account funds.
So the dollar, that the balance of the revolving fund, you're telling me is around 16,000 to 20,000?
Yeah, and so typically, you know, what we've seen over the years, except for the last couple of years, is that we were approaching $52,000, $53,000 a year in terms of revenue and expenses. Those numbers have decreased, but as I mentioned, we don't want to increase the cost of our services to our seniors. So each year, we look at the surrounding communities and some of our comparable communities to see what they're charging for fees and what they are in turn paying for those services, and we are right in line with them. And I think some of the other communities are seeing the same impact, that we're gonna have to start looking at what some of those, I'm sorry, registration fees might look like in the next couple of years.
Okay, so I guess I was not asking the right question.
Okay.
How much is spent from that fund each year? That was spent from that fund last year?
So, last year, we expended all of the funds that we took. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me. I apologize for last fiscal year.
Or the year before, just I'm trying to benchmark this.
Yeah, so I want to, it's typically around $32,000, $33,000 a year.
Got it. So the 80,000 limit is really not a real limit.
So it's up...
Not gonna exceed it.
It's, it's, so is that what we're voting on, though? Up to 80,000?
It's up to 80,000.
Up to 80,000, yes.
Okay, so...
But we're not gonna go into debt. If there's 10,000, you're taking 10,000.
Right, exactly.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Right, you can't over-extend the fund.
Right, right.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it. Bill, do you have any questions?
No, it makes sense.
Liz, you're good?
No other questions?
Then I'll take a motion on Article J.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article J.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I am an I as well. Thank you very much for being here, and I know you waited a long time.
Yes, very patient.
Just for this one item, so thank you.
Well, thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Yes. We now move to appointments. Do we have any appointments this evening, Bill?
I would make a motion to appoint Callum Johnstone to the Harbor Development Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I am an I as well. Approved, thank you. I believe that's it for appointments. Public comment. Are there any members of the public like to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Art?
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
And Michelle?
We had our first rating agency call this afternoon with Moody's, and it went very well, and we have the second call with S&amp;P tomorrow. Thank you, Joe, for participating in both, so we are very, we're hopeful, confident that our ratings will remain the same at the highest available to municipalities.
Tom?
They did go very well, in large part because of the young lady sitting right next to me, and her work is unparalleled, as always. Thank you, Michelle, for everything you did on those rating calls. But no, nothing else, thank you.
No licenses that you approved recently?
No, no, that's right.
Great. Liz?
Nothing to report. Thank you, Michelle, for all your work this week.
Yeah, let...
Sorry, I did have a license. I'm sorry. I'm glad you said that. I was thinking when you said it that I thought I had. Do you want me to wait, Bill?
No, go ahead.
I did, I'm sorry. I did approve a one-day special license for Hingham Cemetery Corp for their winter cultural series at the Ames Chapel. That was, that is to be held on January 15th, 11th, 15th, and 23rd, from 7:00 to 9:30, with an estimated attendance of 70 people.
Great, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Bill?
Yeah, last Wednesday, I attended the Veterans Appreciation Night, put on by the Hingham Wrestling Team, the Hingham Wrestling Boosters Club, and the Veterans Appreciation Club at the high school. And wonderful event, a lot of veterans are there. It's really nice that the wrestling team does that every year. I know that you've been a previous year, so my appreciation to everyone at the high school made that happen.
Great. I've got nothing this evening, other than really to thank all the participants. There's a lot of work that goes into the budgets, and it's more than just us speaking this evening, asking the questions. A lot of work went into this, and we look forward to the ultimate budget presentation, Tom, that you'll be making to us later this year. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an I as well. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.